Six o'clock. Okay, I'd like to call the meeting to order. This is Bella Vista Regular City Council Meeting for July 22, 2024. We'll start with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag and to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. A roll call, please.
Council members Snow.
Here.
Hughes.
Here.
Wasniak.
Here.
Wilms.
Here.
Fowler.
Here.
Hanschel.
Here.
Manfred.
Thank you. Now we have citizen input for the rules. There's a three-minute-per-person time limit to address the council on any topic that person's choosing. And the total time allotted for everyone is thirty minutes. Any topic extension beyond the thirty-minute would be at the discretion of the council, but it appears we'll be able to stay within that. So the first speaker is Chris Nelson of Long Harrington Drive.
I'm not going to go over what I remember the last time we had a discussion about the voting ordinance. I think I made myself clear about the conduct of specific council members during the last election. I don't think it's a good idea for the city of Belavista to inject themselves into the people's elections. And the best route to do that would be to work through the county election commission. You said during the last work session, Mr. Mayor, that you were down in Little Rock with the municipal league, and basically they didn't want to touch it with a ten-foot pole. I think that's wise advice, and not put Belavista on the radar and make us an outlier. I hope you all consider this. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Our next speaker is Amy Derpianian of Siskiyou Lake Lane.
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor, and council members. I'd like to speak as a resident and bicycle rider about Highway 71 safety. You may know that when the bridge over Sugar Creek was washed out and the alternating freeway route was put in place along Lake Bella Vista, the shoulder from the CBS parking lot south along Highway 71 to across from the visitor center has been closed with signage and white picket pillars installed by R-DOT. And I understand the freeway route will eventually be fixed with other bridges being installed, but that's expected to take eighteen months or so. The closed shoulder has been heavily used by pedestrians, runners, cyclists, and all other forms of transportation. I am very concerned for my safety when I ride it, whether I'm going from Pedelec Forward to CBS or all-in through Gobbies. When you have a car speeding by you or a truck doing forty-five, and the only thing protecting you is a white picket, it doesn't feel safe. I'd like the city to install in that three-quarters of a mile concrete or other type of barriers to actually protect people using that temporary freeway until it's officially rerouted. Note that this route brings staff, students, and families directly to Cooper Elementary. So I think having that in place by August fourteenth should be a priority. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Marybel Childress of Seventy-Four Ralph Drive.
I'm Seventy-Five. I don't know what I was thinking when I said that. Sorry.
Okay.
I'm Marybel Childress. I'm a proud resident of Bella Vista for the last ten years, and since July first, I'm principal of Cooper Elementary School. I've been in education for thirty-three years and an administrator for twenty-seven, and am so excited for the opportunity to be principal of Cooper, where I can serve the students and families and community where I live and that I love. And so I wanted to come tonight just to introduce myself to the mayor and to the council so he could put a face with the name. I also want to thank you for the city's partnership with Cooper Elementary. Cooper would not be as great as it is without the great partnership of the city of Bella Vista. We really appreciate, in particular, the law enforcement and school resource officer partnership, and first responder, and fire department partnerships, although we hope we never have to call them. It gives us great peace of mind to know that they are there, and they are there supporting us, and that you are as well. Also, I want to make sure you know that I believe the best partnerships are those that are mutually beneficial. So if there's ever anything that I can do for the mayor, for the city council, or the city, or that Cooper Elementary can, please don't hesitate to ask.
Well, thank you for coming. We appreciate it. The next speaker is Frosty Marriott of Thirty-Voss World Circle.
Thank you, Mayor, and council members. My name's Frosty Marriott. We live at Thirty-Voss World Circle. The mayor just said. Carly and I moved here late last summer from the Orange Fork Valley, about twenty-five miles down Valley of Aston. I was recovering from a duel of open-heart surgery in Houston and was sent to lower altitude to facilitate my recovery so I could walk our daughter down the aisle in October twenty-first. I'm a retiring CPA, and Carly is my wife slash office manager. I've only fired her one time, and I'll never do it again. She's quit numerous times since then, but here she is forty-one years later. So we're originally from North Louisiana, but spent thirty years in Colorado. I was elected to three terms as town trustee in Carbondale, Colorado, and served in the Carbondale Chamber of Commerce Executive Board, Planning and Zone Commission, et cetera. Wow, many people in Northwest Arkansas. Hmm, a lot of people, huh? When you factor in the development of twenty-seven hundred acres in Bella Vista, it can certainly be a real blessing if it's done correctly. It depends on the working vision of this body to get that done. During my years in town government, I was proponent of planned growth and development as it affects more and more people. Without attention to cumulative effects of that growth can lead you saying what the heck happened. So some of the problems for the projected cumulative growth, as we all know, are traffic congestion, speeding, air pollution, trash and recycling, water pollution, noise pollution, light pollution, and dark skies. In my allotted time, I'm going fast at Cuyahoga Line, and I do that on the line. Based on personal observations, the speed limits on Lancashire and on 71 seem to be suggested minimums and not a maximum speed limit. It's been passed last week on the double-yellow line. Doing the speed limit is a little bit intimidating for an O guy, so I let my wife drive me most places now so I don't have to get as intimidated. That and the drift across the double-yellow lines with the trailer on the back, I found it intimidating. I've called the BB Police Department twice, three or four times the last year, never received a return call. I'd like for BB to put out flashing signs on the roads and highways to warn them of speeding and deer crossings this time of year especially. I've seen three in the last week, three-dead does on from 71 the last week. And at this time of the year, that means most of them have caliphoned, and that's another death, and it's either a start to death or getting a lot of buzzards. So I'd like for us to get on top of that. We have a great recycling center, and we avail ourselves of weekly, and I think we should... They don't accept styrofoam and plastic bags, and we need to figure that out. Thank you all so much for your time and your service and what you do. Let me know if I can help. Thank you.
Thank you. Time for council member... Council member Bella Vista would like to speak on his subjects. Wendy.
Just thank you all for coming out today. Mr. Nelson, thank you for your words. We'll keep those in mind. Amy, thank you for your concerns. That has been very concerning for me, as well as a driver who's worried about pedestrians and cyclists, and maybe we can figure out something we can do, what we're allowed to do on 71. And Mr. Childress, again, thank you for coming. I'm so excited to work with you this year at Cooper. And Mr. Marriott, one, thank you for your service to our communities in the past, and thank you for living here. We're so glad to have you and your wife as residents. And definitely, maybe there's sketchy driving situations in Bella Vista with minimums opposed to highway limits. Maybe we can get this nailed down a little bit. I did a campaign this past month to try to really dampen down those speedy drivers, especially on 71, and hope that can continue in the future. And I mean, I have a heart for cycling as well, so maybe we can figure out some style of it, some cycle rule options otherwise.
Larry Wills.
I'd like to thank Mr. Childress for coming tonight. A promotion from Rapid to come over to Bella Vista, and we appreciate that. Thank you. Relative to the bicycling and traffic on 71, we have a study that was applied for grant to make, looking at bicycles and pedestrian use of those outside lanes. We're blessed to have a divided highway, two lanes in each direction, along with a full shoulder. It's a blessing and a curse, because the blessing is that if you have a problem with your car, you can pull off and not stop the traffic or create a traffic jam, especially during commuter time, and that's in the morning and then the afternoon. But the reality is, is that it's also a demise, because there are other folks who want to use that space besides the vehicles that it was intended for originally. We recognize that and have made application for two studies, actually, to make use of that outside area, that strip along the outside, to make that into a potentially dedicated bicycle lane and pedestrian usage. And I'm not sure about the details of it, but I know we have a study application applied for DOT grants, monies, to look at the possibility of converting that and making it into a more safe corridor, so an answer to your concern about the pylons that are out there. They don't do a lot, but the reality is, and the concern is, is that 71 is our main thoroughfare for communication for workers going from Bella Vista in the central area, both east and west of 71, which is a huge population of workers that use that road every day as a commuter route. They want to use that road at its maximum allowable speed, notwithstanding that maybe someone might exceed that a mile or two. But the reality is that it is a vital transportation link for the city, for our connection, for the veteran community that we are. We have employment in the city, but it doesn't touch at all what our employment outside of the city is for people who live here. So I realize your concern and share a little bit of that, but I think the critical part is that we don't want to compromise the traffic travel speed on that corridor because of the commuter traffic. And so there will have to be some sharing done by those who want to use the bicycling side. Eventually, it will be hopefully improved to a more safe corridor for you guys, so.
Hi, Dan Fowler.
Yeah, just real quick. Yeah, I was real happy when I first saw the cones on 71. I even less so, especially with bicyclers coming my direction on that side of the road. I will say, after the first time, I wasn't aware of it, and I take extra precaution. I hope everyone else does as well, because we certainly don't want any, you know, severe accidents taking place there. Marybel, I want to address you too. It's a pleasure to see you tonight. Marybel and I, we attend the same church in Bella Vista, so I see her a lot. She actually did the children's church for a period of time. She was always excellent and always very well-prepared. My wife is an administrator in the Bentonville School District, as Marybel is, so she knew her prior, and my wife has nothing but just outstanding things to say about her. So I know, Marybel, you would be tripping in a leadership position, but my perspective, you're just an even better person. So welcome to Bella Vista. Third, these few concerns, I hear you, you know. I have noticed that the Bella Vista police, they actually have been patrolling 71 quite a bit lately. As a matter of fact, one of our police officers was just pulling a person over today when we were heading into Bentonville. So I know it's patrolled, but I hear your concerns. It's tough to get everybody, but they are out there. As far as a deer goes, two months ago, I had a deer right in front of me on 71, just about the Missouri State Line at the Bella Vista Wellness Center. I followed it across, and just everybody knows, if there's one, there's two. So I watched it. I didn't have to slam on my brakes, but slowed down, let it go, and then I watched it, and I looked over to my left for the other. Didn't see anything. I looked back to my right to watch it run off the road, and bam, it destroyed my left front fender, my driver's side door, my headlight, to the tune of ten thousand five hundred dollars. Luckily, I had insurance of three-two-fifty, but the deer are a real problem everywhere around this part of the country. I think not everywhere anymore. We didn't see deer when I was a kid growing up. They're almost like squirrels now, everywhere. So everybody needs to keep their eyes open for sure, so anyway.
Anyone else? Okay, I guess we're all set. I would like to thank everybody for speaking tonight. I appreciate that. Next item is action on the minutes. Approval of the minutes from the June 2024 regular meeting. Larry.
I have a question with the procedure we included at the end of the minutes, the meeting agenda, meetings coming up for the next couple of weeks. My question is, because it's ambivalent, or takes up space usually, but almost a half page, actually, I'm wondering if we need to include that with the minutes after it's read, even though it was a part of the meeting. And you know, put in a simple statement is that the meeting schedule was presented by Mayor Flynn and referred to whatever. Do we need to include that? I guess it's a procedural question.
Well, announcements are a part of your agenda for the rules, and so, you know, how those announcements are presented to you in the minutes and how you approve the minutes, I guess, are a matter of custom, but we've always done it out there, I'll say that. And I don't, I don't, I guess you can change the way you do it, but we tend to one-hold tables in minutes a little less, I think.
In fact, I'm thinking that a meeting agenda listing like that, a meeting listing like that, maybe not as quite as important as the contents of the minutes for our...
I really would pay for us to get into the idea of, well, this is important, put this in minutes, and this wasn't that important, so maybe we should put that in the minutes. I think probably let's just put what happened in the minutes. But really, it's not, it's not a good strategy anyways.
I'm allowing them in there and using those spaces.
If you're asking me my opinion, leave a little less.
Okay.
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, that was Larry Wills and Wendy Hughes. Roll call vote.
Council member Snow.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Wasniak.
Yes.
Wilms.
Yes.
Fowler.
I was saying you weren't here last month.
Motion.
And Hanschel.
Yes. Motion carried six to zero. The next thing is the monthly financial report. We have the financials in from May 31, 2024, and they can be viewed on our website. Operating revenues compared to last year are up three point eight percent, and city sales tax is up six point eight percent, and county sales tax is up two point six percent. So it's the second straight month that the county sales tax increase was quite modest. So we're watching that to see if that's an ongoing trend. Operating expenses are six hundred and two thousand below budget, so we're controlling our expenses pretty well so far. So it continues to be a positive report. Revenues are up and controlling the expenses, but we have a sharp eye on it for the future because of our ongoing capital expenditures. Okay. Next, I would entertain a motion to suspend the rules of order and procedure to allow all ordinances on the agenda to be read by title only.
Sure. Second.
That was Mr. Wasniak and Mr. Fowler.
Yes.
Yeah, I thought it was you, but I was looking at the right picture. Roll call vote.
Council members Hanschel.
Yes.
Fowler.
Yes.
Wilms.
Yes.
Wasniak.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Snow.
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero. Under unfinished business, we have an ordinance requiring candidates for election to any municipal office of the city of Bella Vista, in addition to any other requirement of state law, to file campaign contribution and expenditure reports with the Belavista city clerk, and sufficient time for voters to make use of such information prior to the beginning of early voting and for other purposes. And this is third reading, and it was tabled from the May 2024 regular meeting. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, so, obviously, this was an ordinance that was crafted, I shouldn't say by me, it was Jason, obviously, that did the wording of the ordinance, but it was a situation where I approached him, and I asked him for his assistance to help me do a little bit of research on this topic. So what I'd like to do, and I'm going to try to go through this as quick as I can, because this ordinance was initially on first reading, I think it was in January or February. I'm not, I think it might have been February, yeah. So this has been out there for a while, and there's a reason for that. I'll talk about that in a second. So just a brief review of what brings us here. A current law requires campaign contribution expense reports to be submitted ten days prior to the general election, which is after the early voting period begins. This current law clearly does not support the promise of fulfilling the obligation of ensuring that there is a fully informed electorate before voting begins, and where campaign contributions may be, may be being sourced from. And I believe that in the recent incurred environment, that the interest in Bella Vista that is unfolding before our very eyes, the full disclosure of campaign funds being submitted to candidates for public office, being made public before any voting takes place. I believe this position is supported by the stirring that was caused by the reporting in the Weekly Vista during early December of 2022, during our last election cycle. I'm not going to, my, my position in mind is I'm not going to call anybody out, okay? I mean, that can be done easy enough. If anybody wants to source the reports, they can do it, and they can look through them on their own, and I believe they'll, they'll see some nice things that will raise their eyebrows, I will say. And if anybody would like to see any of them, I have them, and I would be more than happy to forward them to anybody that would like to see them. So I just do, I do want to read just one, one small paragraph from that article that was written by Bennett Horn, who was the author of the article. And there were actually two PACs that he referenced in the article. Again, I'm not going to call anybody out here, but this was kind of his takeaway. He says, "I'm also fine with the candidate getting the money they think they need within reason to run a successful campaign, but when the final votes are tallied, my only concern is where the loyalty lies. Is the loyalty to the person or group giving the most money? Is the loyalty with the out-of-town or out-of-state donor? Or is the loyalty with constituents on the home front, the ones a race winner is charged with representing?" And I have the same concern and the same thoughts. So what I did after, you know, I was really, made more fully aware, because I had suspicions, I actually, you know, as I mentioned to you before, I actually sourced the reports myself. And just as far as say, as far as me sourcing the reports versus anyone else, because I was called out for doing that, like there was some type of conspiracy taking place or something, I went through all of the voting references in the Arkansas statutes and read everything. And to what Jason had presented to me, I didn't see anything that would prohibit the city from passing an ordinance themselves requiring that these reports are submitted to the city prior to the early voting period. Didn't know yet, but I'm going to get to another point here in a minute. But in regards to campaign contributions, it says, "Upon proper filing, the information," and I'm not going to state the statute numbers, "shall constitute a public record and shall be available within twenty-four hours of a reporting deadline to all interests, interested persons, and news media." That's all interested persons, including me. So I found out that there was a significant amount of money coming from outside the city, some even outside the state. It was coming from PACs, it was coming from special interests, it was coming from political parties. And I think we should all be wary of that, and I think that people should have an opportunity to take note, clearly. So again, in the interest of Belavista residents, I approached Jason. He did the research, and in his opinion, there was nothing preventing us in the Arkansas Code from enacting an ordinance of our home to require these reports to be submitted to the city. So, the ordinance proposal. During the first reading, as I referenced before, I thought in January or February, it was February, I believe, I expected some negative reaction, but I knew there would be a positive reaction as well. The support came from residents, which wasn't a surprise to me at all. The simple response to a person, with the exception of a small contingent of residents, was always, "That just makes sense." That was a voicey answer. The pushback... believes they should have full disclosure to themselves for whatever they want. However, balance the citizens in the city of Belvista, maybe shouldn't have full disclosure on, you know, campaign contributions that may influence what their voting may be. Okay? "The ordinance proposal was submitted to the Arkansas Attorney General to seek an opinion on whether the ordinance was valid or whether it would violate any Arkansas state law governing elections." Against my nature, because I can be an impatient person, for sure, I supported the desire of several members of the council to delay a vote until the opinion was delivered. And I wanna read a couple of excerpts from the Attorney General's opinion, okay? I'm not gonna go through the whole thing. And again, you can source it yourself, it was in, it's in our app, I believe, right? So, and this is from, yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, Tim Rigg, our Attorney General, State Attorney General. "The proposed ordinance cites ACA 7-6 Acts 224 and declares that matters concerning local elections do not fall under the category of state affairs, since that cities are prohibited from legislating. You asked the following two questions, and this was submitted by Minnie McElinden, who is a state representative, and she represents the southern part, I believe, the city of Belvista. Does it propose," this is what she was asking the Attorney General, "does it propose Belvista ordinance conflict with or violate any current Arkansas laws relating to or concerning campaign finance or disclosure? Number two, does it propose Belvista ordinance conflict with or conflict with or violate any Arkansas ethics laws or requirements?" And then, the response, again, I'm just, I'm just taking that excerpt out, and then she didn't get the full thing. I'm not trying to hide anything that was in this, because there was really not anything negative concerning what the city was, was the city, what the ordinance is proposing. Says response, "For the reasons discussed in the opinion, the proposed Belvista ordinance does not conflict or violate current Arkansas law concerning campaign finance or ethics. An ordinance enacted under a city's police power is presumed valid unless a court concludes that there is no rational basis for the ordinance, that the ordinance is arbitrary, capricious, or unreasonable. Although this particular issue appears to be one of first impression, it is my opinion that a court would likely find that the city has authority to pass the proposed ordinance under the city's police power. Because a proposed ordinance, at a minimum, could be categorized as improving the order of the city and its residents. Although the earliest cases typically concerned health and safety, since the courts have routinely upheld ordinances regulating many areas outside of health and safety, such as fraud, coercion, aesthetics, business pricing, and general prosperity of the community, as being reasonable related to the general welfare, order, comfort, or convenience of a city's inhabitants." And then, third, under ACA 14-33-43-60, neither municipal elections nor campaign finance are listed as state affairs, subject to the general laws of the state, so municipalities may presumptively legislate broadly on the subject. "It is a conflict. An ordinance that requires municipal office candidates to, in addition to any other requirement of state law, file campaign contributions and expenditure reports with the city clerk, no later than seven days prior to early voting, does not itself contradict or conflict with ACA 7-6-208. Although the ordinance obligates candidates to file an additional report to provide an ordinance is harmonious with state law and is not, and not less restrictive than state law. In this type of situation, it has not been impossible to comply with both the ordinance and with the state statute. In sum, the proposed Belvista ordinance likely fits under a broad use of police power and does not conflict with or violate current Arkansas laws concerning campaign finance or disclosure, or ethics laws or requirements." So there's from the Attorney General. So, 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 you know, some points, you know, were brought up, that the submission of these reports might intimidate persons who are within the community, running for public office, if they had to do this. I don't understand why that would be the case. You're gonna have to submit them anyway, to the county. Any eyes can put their eyes upon those reports and read and disseminate, and decipher their own, if there are any issues or not. And I will say this, if you are intimidated by having to do this and file these with the city, maybe this, this position isn't for you. Because if you think that this is difficult in the environment of Belvista moving forward, and as things begin to unfold with the law purchase and certain ask or request that are being made, the seat's gonna get much hotter. It just is. And I will say, if you wanna run for public office in Belvista, and this is just another thing, if you're gonna jump into the South, you better be ready for the riot. So, obviously, I'm fully in support of it. I don't understand why it hasn't been done yet. I don't understand why there are political positions, maybe down in Arkansas, that wouldn't support this. It only makes sense. But I'm going to go ahead, I was going to go ahead, and move to approve the ordinance. However, I'm gonna go ahead and give everybody an opportunity to speak their own opinion.
Wendy Hughes?
I do have a quick question to the statement. Jason, so if a candidate does not file with the city under this, what happens?
This will be incorporated into our city code, and so not doing so would subject them to basically a citation for violating our city code. And there's a punishment in the city code for violation of city ordinances, which do not have their own punishment, which this is one of them. And so you're looking at a few, I believe it's a thousand dollars a day, for every day a matter is in violation. So, you're looking at a basic, and that would be after a citation, after a guilty finding by a judge.
Thank you. So, I don't think we're the proper body to be involved in election requirements. There's already a lot of division in politics, and honestly, there are more important things that we should focus on as a city. I do have a little bit of fear that this is passed by Belvista, and other cities adopted and have their own variable timelines, that it will trigger the state to get involved in our elections. And we already know that there are state legislators who are strong at the bit to change and mandate how we do our elections, via forcing us to have partisan elections, even as far as an option we want it. There's a head push that could be a thing, and I would like not to have a response by on our elections. I do think that if people are gonna be in the areas of campaign funds, be it the candidate or a donor, and the various meaning that maybe accepting funds from a large organization, or a PAC, or a person, that might be inciting, we just gave it a date to do it. They will just take that money on the sixth date before early voting begins, instead of before this. And then no one will know until after it's all filed. If people are gonna give basically dirty money, or money that might have the power to blitz, they're gonna do it, and we just told them we wanted to do it. I also think that this is just extra government overreach with not a lot of benefit, because people can already choose to vote when their finances are released according to the normal schedule, if that's something they really are concerned with. I'm an early voter, I'm a chronic early voter individual, I love doing it. My birthday falls in that early voting period, and usually I'll choose myself, I go and vote when is an option on my birthday. When I early vote, I know that's a gamble. I know that I will not have the full breadth of information of all the candidates, because I can't know that. I can't do that until election day. If finances are extremely important to me, I would wait until they were released and do that. And I have gotten the vibes, I've requested, like everybody else has, I think, when I was campaigning, I've requested them recently, kind of see like what people have said previously, on all the races we've had as a city. People are in a habit of like to find information. Honestly, if you're the most fully aboard voter, you do it till voting day. You can vote on October 31st, and November 1st, or I'm out, that person's a very bad person, or find information that is unsavory, and you can't take it back. I just don't see a really a point with doing this. And I don't think we're the right body to bear this.
Jim Wasniak?
We currently have a 10-day window, correct, for when you have to file?
Then prior to the general election. Yeah, 10 days. Which is after early voting begins.
I understand, but it's, there's a 10-day window. You gotta have it in 10 days to have it.
That's correct.
Okay. If you're that worried about where the money comes from, instead of voting 14 or 15 days early, vote eight or nine days early, and then you'll have the information. End of story.
I think reasonable and rational are the couple of key words in the Attorney General's opinion. What's reasonable and rational? There's nothing rational or rational about this particular ordinance. It's a duplication of a, of a, something that already is required by a state law. It's just another duplication of a governmental requirement, another governmental document, which already have to mean those will begin with. It gives an opportunity, the only thing that serves is a particular person's issue with campaign contributions in the past. Campaign contributions have been going on for a debt forever. That's how people's campaigns are financed. Are they financed, or do people make contributions for something other than simply because they support that particular candidate? I'm sure they do. Do they do that in Belvista? I don't know what they would do it for. We don't have big contracts that require or support a cake bite for anything, so I don't know what their purpose would be in making a contribution for that matter, to that thought. It's just an unnecessary ordinance that should not be passed.
Excuse me. I just wanted to thank Councilman Fowler for his due diligence, all the research and all the stuff, his, all the effort that he put into crafting this. Sure, you can wait to vote, to get all the information. I don't see this as anything, it is just transparency to me. That's what it's always been about, nothing more, nothing less. I don't think it's a big deal. I'm proud to be possibly on the first, on the first draft of this type of statement, you know, as elections get bigger and bigger, cost-wise, I think that anything that aids or assists with transparency of the election is a big hit to everybody. That being said, I'd like to make a motion to, just real quick, cameras on, take out the lights. Okay, appreciate that.
Sure. First of all, and Councilmember Hughes, I don't remember exactly what you said, but to me, there's nothing more important than transparency, right? Also, it's true that people can wait and vote. Well, it wouldn't actually be nine days, it would probably be more like a week before the elections. And hold off, wait, let's see where, where the campaign contributions are coming from, right? And see if there's any undue influence that might be taking place. I don't know, I don't know, I don't know, shake that, you can do that. I still think early voting's a big deal, and a lot of people are gonna go ahead and vote, and hold on, leave a prayer that they got it right, right? And hopefully that not gonna be proved wrong. And nor am I calling this dirty money, nor am I calling anyone unsavory. This doesn't tell anyone that they can't take any money, that they shouldn't take any money. It's strictly up to you whether you wanna do that or not. And then risk, you know, what the public may think of it, your constituents, because ultimately, that's who we speak to. It's interesting, you know, we talk about the politicians down in Little Rock, you know, they have their opinion, and it's a fascinating thing. None of them are sitting on City Council in Belvista, Arkansas, and none of them are responsible to the constituents that I speak to here in Belvista. As far as submission of the forms, if anybody's a little nervous about money that they may have accepted from somebody, maybe it's Uncle Bill, or Aunt Sally, or, you know, some innocuous whoever that just likes the person and wants to contribute, you know, to their campaign, that's fine. And if somebody thinks that that makes them a little nervous, and, you know, if that's your feeling, because people don't know who it is, you could also, you could always attach a page explaining who or why certain contributions were made, so people would know, and people, you know, wouldn't be allowed to speculate. And as far as submitting the forms, it's more or less, it's just gonna be a duplicate that's hopefully, maybe not, maybe people are gonna be, you know, really, really smart here, and they're gonna wait and say, no, don't give me any campaign funds until after the Belvista requirement, you know, and then I'll submit it to the county, and hopefully nobody will request them to look for it, they won't notice it. Maybe people will do that, you know, I don't know. I would hope not. But, and also, as far as submission of the forms are concerned, now, this hasn't been discussed, but the county forms, they have to be notarized, I believe, you know, before you submit. I don't know if it would require notary or not, but it's so easy to do, I mean, for people that know what they're doing, that you can, you know, scan them into like a notes app on your phone, and just email them, you know, into the city already in electronic form. And I would assume, you know, we would just probably put them, you know, someplace on the city website, so people could access them, they wouldn't have to request them, they could just go on and grab, pull them down if they wanted to. So, anyway, once again, I don't understand why this hasn't already been done. It's interesting, when they set dates for early voting, there are all these boxes that you have to check off as a city before you do that, but boom, 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 this was left off. And if somebody doesn't set precedence, it will just quietly go away, and we'll never hear about it again.
Larry Wilmes?
I guess a couple of comments, a couple of comments. One relative to the Arkansas municipal reaction to, to the proposal. And I don't really surprise, when you look at the makeup of Arkansas, we have well over 500 cities and towns, I think the number might be in that range.
501.
501?
Yeah.
Cities and towns?
But it moves all the time.
But in any event, many of those are under 5,000 population. So, do they have issues there? They may-
But, and also as far as submission of the forms are concerned, now, this hasn't been discussed, but the county forms, they have to be notarized, I believe, you know, before you submit them. I don't know whether to require notary or not, but it's so easy to do, I mean, for people that know what they're doing, that you can, you know, scan into like a notes app on your phone and just email them, you know, into the city already in electronic form. And I would assume, you know, we would just probably put them, you know, someplace on the city website, so people can access them, they wouldn't have to request them, they could just go on and grab, pull them down if they wanted to. So, anyway, once again, I don't understand why this hasn't already been done. It's interesting, when they set dates for early voting, there are all these boxes that you have to check off as a city before you do that, but boom, 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 this one's left off. And if somebody doesn't set precedence, it will just quietly go away, and we'll never hear about it again.
Larry Wilms.
I guess a couple of comments, a couple of comments. One relative to the Arkansas Municipal League reaction to the proposal, and I'm not really surprised, when you look at the makeup of Arkansas, we have well over 500 cities and towns, I think the number might be in that range.
501.
501?
Yeah.
Cities and towns?
But it moves all the time.
But in any event, many of those are under 5,000 population. So, do they have issues there? They may have, but likely not, and so as many of them represented at the Municipal League come from that group of communities, they're not going to have an interest in this. When you look at communities of 5,000, 10,000, 15,000, 20,000 people, you're looking at a community that has some capacity for funny things taking place. And Belavista is not unique, Belavista is not unique in that regard. Where unique, especially from all other cities in the state of Arkansas, and most of the cities around the country, is that we have 38,000 lots, residential building lots, that are created, zoned, owned by individuals, some of them by investors who own a dozen, five dozen, 10 dozen, 100 lots. So there's some financial interests that are here in Belavista that are unique, that are not prevalent in all the other cities in Arkansas. Because of that, we have some unique issues that potentially could evolve. We may have seen some of it in a recent election, recorded in the VISTA, that Mr. Fowler reported excerpts from is an example of that. We, the information that we're requiring is the same as what can be reported in the county, the county forum. It's a state forum that the county uses, so it's the same information. The other part of it is that it provides openness for the candidate. And so, so if I get a hundred dollars from my uncle, or fifty dollars from my aunt, or forty dollars from my sister, or four hundred dollars from my sister in an election, it's no problem, I can report that. They may not even live in Belavista, but that's unusual. And so you can take care of that by answering it right on the form, so and so, because you have to put the person's name on the gift card, right? And you can say, well, cousin, sister, uncle, nephew, business partner, whatever. And so you can clearly explain it without having to go to extra work, and it's just openness and open government, I think. So I'm in support of the ordinance.
Jerry Snow.
Mayor, I think this matter has probably been discussed about as much as it can be discussed. I mean, it's probably going online, so I'm calling to be questioned.
I think that's a good idea. I'd like to mention one thing, which I've mentioned at earlier meetings. I do believe that Mr. Fowler brought this all subject up in good faith, and I think his motives are pure. I think that elections are run by the state and county and not the city, and I don't like that, the injecting the city in it. But I think we need a motion and a second if we want to vote on it.
I vote.
Craig motion.
Second.
That's Craig Hansel and Doug Fowler. Roll call vote.
Councilmember Hughes, no. Wozniak?
No.
Wilms?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Hansel?
Yes.
Snow?
No.
Mayor, you may vote, yes, if he says are.
No, I'm not going to vote.
So it'll play a three to three.
Okay. Ordinance fail three to three. Then next ordinance, ordinance is a resolution expressing the opinion of the city council, a nonpartisan body, that citizens should be highly vigilant regarding the influence of partisan special interest group campaign contributions during Belavista nonpartisan municipal elections. This also was stapled from May of 2024.
Don't you approve?
Mr. Wozniak, a motion approved. Want to make a second?
Second.
Doug Fowler, second, and we can have some, still have discussion, can't wait. Jason, if someone wants to.
No, I was just going to say, so, I say, this is just a statement that people running for public office in Belavista should be highly vigilant in accepting campaign contributions from people outside of the city, special interest groups, political PACs, et cetera. And, you know, should work to, you know, get their campaign supported, hopefully from individuals inside the city, if they just so desire to do so, if they don't have funds to, you know, support their own, you know, their campaign independently. So that's just strictly what this is all about.
No, Wendy is.
I think that campaign funds are absolutely important to, one thing to consider as a voter, but it's one of dozens of things you need to consider as a voter. And I don't like highlighting just the funding. I think that, like I said, yes, we think that voters should be vigilant regarding the candidates that are proposed, but naming one out of dozens of factors that are offering people weight, I don't think is the best idea.
Anyone else? Okay, I think we're ready for a roll call vote.
Councilmember Wozniak?
Yes.
Wilms?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Hansel?
Yes.
Snow?
No.
Hughes? No.
Motion carried, four to two.
Five? Four.
Four.
Yeah, four to two.
Four, yes.
Okay. A new business resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter a contract with Leo M. Elabrock Company of Wentzville, Missouri pursuant to a source wealth cooperative purchasing agreement in the amount of $63,999.34 for the purchase of turnout gear for the fire department. Did you want to hear from Chief Sims, since he's here this week?
I think we've already heard about it.
Okay.
Moved to be approved.
Second.
That was Mr. Snow and Wendy Hughes. Roll call vote.
Councilmember Fowler?
Yes.
Hansel?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
Wozniak?
Yes.
And Wilms?
Yes.
Ordinance carries, resolution carries six to zero. Next one, next is announcements. Next city council work session is 5:30 on Monday, August 19th, the Belavista Police Training Room. Next city council regular meeting is Monday, August 26th, at the Belavista District Court. Yeah, at 6:00 PM. Yeah, good point. Planning Commission work session is at 4:30 PM, Thursday, August 1, 2024. Planning Commission regular meeting is 4:30 PM, Monday, August 12th. Board of Construction Beels, 3:00 PM, Tuesday, August 13th, if necessary, at Fire Station Number Four Conference Room at 1639 Forest Hills Boulevard.
Mr. Mayor? There are two other meetings that are mentioned out here. One is the order zoning adjustment, which would be, I was first as well, if there is anything, and if they have something for the formal meeting, the work session, well, they don't have a work session, I guess, do they? So the adjustment doesn't do a work session, only the formal meeting, which would be the 12th. So I don't know if that's missing, or whether they don't have an item on their agenda. One never knows.
Okay. Thank you. So, if there's nothing else, then Laura, Richard, thank you very much.